Committee of the Whole. Today is August 25th. I'm Rosalba Domigas, Chair. In accordance with Utah Code 52-42074, Open and Public Meeting Act, I have determined that to protect the health and welfare of Murray citizens in in-person city council meeting, including attendance by the public and the city council is not practical or prudent. Considering the continued rise of COVID-19 case counts in Utah, meeting in an anchor location presents substantial risks to the health and safety of those in attendance because physical distancing measures may be difficult to maintain in the Murray City Council chambers. The Center for Disease Control states that COVID-19 is easily spread from person to person between people who are close contact with one another. The spread is through respiratory droplets when an infected person coughs, sneezes, or talks, and may be spread by people who are non-symptomatic. My intent... It is my intent to safeguard the lives of Murray residents, business owners, employees, and elected officials by meeting remotely through electronic means without an anchor location. You may view the meeting via livestream at www.murraycitylive.com or via Facebook on our Facebook page at MurrayCityUtah. If you would like to submit citizen comments or public hearing comments, you may do so by an email in advance or during the meeting to city.council@murray.utah.gov. Again, that's city.council@murray.utah.gov. It's also on the screen. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Include your name and contact information, and they will be read into the record. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance. I am going to go ahead and ask for a motion for approval of minutes for Committee of the Whole for June 2nd and June 16th. Can I get a motion?
I will move that we approve motion, that we approve the minutes for Committee of the Whole for June 2nd, 2020, and also June 16th, 2020.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Kat. Thank you, Brett. Jennifer?
Ms. Turner.
Hi.
Mr. Hales.
Hi.
Ms. Martinez.
Hi.
Mr. Cox. Ms. Domigas.
Hi. All right. With the minutes approved and passed, we are going to go ahead and start with our first discussion item. And welcome Rochelle Hobbs County Recorder to go over the Salt Lake County Property Watch Program. Hi, Rochelle.
Hi. Thank you so much for inviting me to your Murray City Council. I'm going to share a PowerPoint presentation. Can you guys see that? Yes? Okay, wonderful. Thank you for this opportunity to participate in your Murray City Council meeting. Many people ask what the county Recorder's Office does. We provide a transaction that has to do with real property. We maintain a database of over 14 million documents. For the property record to be accurate and complete, we have to record, abstract, index, and plat all the documents. This year so far, we have already recorded over 190,000 documents, and we are on target to have a record-setting year in recordation. We do all of this with 42 employees, and I am confident that I have one of the hardest-working teams in Salt Lake County. This is a picture of us wearing our masks. We've experienced unprecedented times as our office has responded to the COVID-19 pandemic. Despite these challenges encountered, the Recorder's Office has continued our critical services to the public. There has been no interruption in service. We've been open since March, since this pandemic hit. And that's a picture of our onsite crew. Our office has seen an average increase in documents of 40% in the first half of the year and an increase of 43.5% to date. So we are busy, and we are keeping up with the work. In 2019, we worked to ensure collaborative relationships, both with our fellow recorders across the state, to ensure best practices are implemented, customer service is outstanding, and that our new system going forward, going forward, rather, is intuitive and secure. We met with many of the major title companies one-on-one to ensure our office is providing the services necessary for our constituents to carry out their business, and then sought their feedback on changes to process that maximize our efficiency. Community outreach and service is something that is very important to me. We visited all 16 Salt Lake County senior centers and offered them copies of their complete property records. We were able to look up thousands of records and were able to serve hundreds of individuals by bringing our office and expertise to them. In recent months, our homes have taken on the added role of office, classrooms, and a refuge from this virus. One thing remains the same, and that is the American dream of homeownership. To protect your property record, we have launched a new free service called Property Watch. This service notifies Salt Lake County property owners when something is recorded on their property. This is a great resource that will help prevent title fraud while protecting your property record and offers peace of mind, which I believe is something we all could use a little more of right now. We currently have over 7,700 registrants, and we are hoping to see that number increase. If you were to visit the Salt Lake County Recorder's website and click on Property Watch, which is the middle of the main three links on the homepage, from there, you're asked to provide your Salt Lake County address, enter an email that will only be used for Property Watch contact information, and the parcel number will automatically populate once you've completed steps one and two, and then click on Apply. Once you subscribe, you'll receive a confirmation from the county Recorder's Office, and it's really that easy. Going forward, you'll be notified whenever something is recorded on your property. This is some of the feedback we've received from Property Watch registrants. You can see the words powerful, useful, opens up conversations, allows families to watch the status of elderly, vulnerable people for protection of their property. As of this morning, as I mentioned, we have over 7,700 subscribers, with Murray making up 421 of those subscribers so far. So hopefully, me talking to you tonight, we can get that number for Murray bigger, and hopefully, we get more people from Murray City to subscribe to Property Watch. And I just wanted to end with, again, appreciation and thank you for allowing me to participate in this meeting. We found this picture, a historic picture of Murray City that we thought would be cool to include. And I'm available if you have time for a Q and A. And I'd also be interested in any of you that have subscribed to Property Watch if you have any feedback or questions on it or about what the Recorder's Office does.
Thank you so much, Rochelle. That was great. Does anyone have any comments, questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Rochelle, I'm wondering if you have something on your property, how do you get it removed?
So if you... yeah. So if you had something on your property that you wanted to get removed, you'd have to work with the title company and perhaps even an attorney. And the beauty, Diane, of Property Watch is, hopefully, by subscribing, a lot of times, people won't find out about something recorded on their property until a time of sale, when they're selling their property, and nobody wants that kind of a surprise. So that's a great question. Have you subscribed, Diane?
Not yet, but I will.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thanks. It's a great service.
Rochelle?
Yes.
This is Brett Hales. That's a great idea. I worked with the finance... with a credit union, with credit unions my entire life. And like you said, most of the time when you find that out, you're refinancing or you're selling your property. And a lot of times, it could have been a simple mistake or it could have been removed, and yet it stops all the transactions moving forward. So...
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. We've seen... We've heard personal stories about how Property Watch has empowered the homeowner to know about the records and allowed them time so they were able to get a hold of attorney or a title company to resolve the issue. So thank you.
You're welcome.
It just happened to... Oh, sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I don't know if it's the same way, but a few years ago and before, it used to be where anybody could put a lien on your property. Is that still the same?
Yes, mostly, yes. The Recorder's Office, yeah, records the documents that it receives, so...
Sure. They don't verify. They just record.
Yeah.
Great idea. Thank you.
Yeah. And if any of you would like a complete look-up of your property record, just send me a chat or an email, and I can send that to you in the mail because I'd be happy to provide that. Or just send me an email, and I'll email you back a complete record of your property. And it's... I'll put it in the chat, my email address.
If I might take a sec. I subscribe to this, and I... I... When we paid off our house, alls we got was a thank you from the loan company and no proof that we paid off the house. And this really helps us. We... Jan and I subscribe to it. We got an answer almost instantaneously, and they watch your title to make sure nothing is ever there because, you know, something should happen to you and it goes to your kids. They have no way. But I highly suggest this to anybody and everybody, whether you have your house paid off or not. People go 20 years and then go to sell their house and find out contractor didn't pay for their driveway to be poured, you know? And there's a lien there. So this is just a great service, and I really appreciate what you're doing here.
Thank you, Dell. And I understand your conversations with Senator Maine also helped us in thinking about Property Watch and helped us get planted the seeds. And I really appreciate that.
It's my pleasure. It's a great service.
I just add one thing, too. There's a lot of third-party, unaffiliated vendors out there that will send people information saying that if they want to be notified of anything about their property record for a monthly $15 fee, we'll send you that. And so hopefully, getting the message out that they can subscribe to Property Watch directly from the county Recorder's Office will hopefully make it so people don't fall vulnerable to paying more money for public information. So hopefully, that Property Watch will do that as well.
Rochelle, are you going to different city council meetings as well?
Yes. I'm trying to get on all the city council agendas as much as I can. Yes.
Well, thank you.
And community councils, too. We're trying to...
We've been taking it to the metro townships, yeah. Good. This is awesome. Thank you so much.
I think this is our 13th, so lucky number 13.
Wow. I just have to say one thing. Really, Dale Cox had something to do with this? Rochelle, don't say that. He's already got a big enough head, so...
He asks good questions. I don't know what else to say. And I didn't have a good answer until I got Property Watch.
I thought you... For sure, you were going to say, "He asked me to say that for him."
Oh, no. No, he didn't. Well, thank you again. I'll include my email address, and I would be happy to send you your property record if you want.
Yeah, I might have to email you.
Yeah, I'll include it in the chat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you for attending. Anyone else have any questions? We're good. All right. Well, thank you for your time, Rochelle.
Hey, one more thing. If it could be included in a newsletter or a link on your website or any platform that can communicate this to Murray City residents, that would be wonderful to get, hopefully, more people enrolled in Murray City.
Do you have anything that has been formatted for social media?
Yes, we do. Can I forward that on to someone?
Yes, you can forward it on to Jan.
Jan? Okay.
And she can get it out and disperse it to all of us.
What's Jan's last name?
Lopez.
Lopez. Got it. Okay, we've got her information. Wonderful. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for your time. That was great information. We will be sure to distribute that. All right, so moving on. We are... We are going to go ahead and move forward with Neighborhood Salt Lake for the construction project at 8871 West Triplein. Allison... Allison, how do you pronounce your last name? Tess?
It's actually Treece with an R.
Oh, that's right. She's...
Yeah.
The R in. Who's the manager at Neighborhoods for Murray Office. Allison, welcome. And please go ahead and let us know what is going on.
Okay, well, thank you so much for having me here. And I am looking forward to that mortgage watch program, too. That sounds like a great deal. I'm going to actually turn the time over to Rob Corriere. He's our engineer and let him kind of explain the situation, what's going on, and then we'll kind of open it up for questions. Go ahead, Rob. You'll have to unmute.
Could I interrupt? I still have Rochelle sharing her screen.
Yes, I was just going to say that. Rochelle? Rochelle, you're still sharing.
Sorry about that. We're exiting right now.
Okay.
Sorry.
No worries. Thank you, Rochelle. Give us a few moments, everyone. The joys of the internet. Welcome.
At least it's a nice background.
Right?
It's lovely.
Jan, can you remove it out all on your... Oh, there we go. All right, go ahead, Rob. Take it away.
Rob, I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. Okay, so we were asked to design a 10-lot subdivision for Neighborhood Works. And as part of the process, the city had asked us to consider continuing the road down through to connect Triplein to Willow Grove. And so we went about our design and presented it to the planning commission. And they had provided a few conditions for us, engineering and planning. And we were able to quite easily take care of a few of the questions that they had had about our design. But a key issue of the design was the requirement for us to obtain a piece of property that's currently in a protection strip along the north side of the subdivision adjacent to us. And so, you know, we've spoken with all departments within the city. And, you know, each department weighed in for different reasons about why they all wanted the road to go through. You know, the main thing was the health, safety, welfare of the community as a whole. We understand this might be a slight inconvenience for a few residents, but for the community as a whole and how it functions with traffic around the schools, every department, including fire, police, planning, public works, public utilities, they all weighed in that it's a benefit, a greater benefit, to have the road go through. And, you know, the reasons are numerous, but currently, a big issue is that students have to cross onto private property, you know, in order to get to the school. And then they have to traverse through a field. This new proposal would give them a nice public sidewalk with streetlights and a safe passage. You know, they're currently walking through the parking lot that's not striped, and there's just a lot of bad traffic patterns there. So, you know, we feel that this is something that would benefit the community as a whole. And we understand, you know, the need for the city to take the property from this particular landowner isn't something that's looked upon lightly. And one thing we would like to point out is the piece of property that is... Needs to be acquired is currently not really performing any use or enjoyment to the landowner. It's a piece of land at the end of the dead-end street that is not being used. And really, the intent of this dead-end street was for it to always go through. You know, Murray City has design standards that require a turnaround for a dead-end street. This particular street, Willow Grove, does not have a turnaround because at the time, the thought was that it would go through, and it would not need the turnaround. This type of thing would not be approved today, we were told by the planning staff in Murray. And so, you know, we're looking, you know, for your input and to see if you have any questions about what we're trying to do here. You know, we got great input from your planning commissioners. I honestly was very impressed at their overview of this project. And some of them had some personal connection to it, you know, about the health and safety. You know, one of the homeowners stated that they never needed safety vehicles or emergency vehicles on their little dead-end street. And so it wasn't important for it to go through. And one of the planning commissioners immediately responded that he's a coach on a baseball team that had an emergency at the ballfield at the school, and the emergency vehicle couldn't get within hundreds of yards of the site. They had to walk in, which caused a significant delay. And so right away, you know, we had a good example of how this benefits other folks health and safety-wise just as much as it might the folks living on the dead-end street. And someone else chimed in a very similar story of an emergency vehicle trying to get to the school, and it was held up by all the vehicles and parking for the ballgames. This road going through would help them with another route to get to the site. And although it may inconvenience a few folks to have to hear a few more cars, it benefits, you know, the city as a whole to have better interconnectivity around their schools. One of the planners actually performed a computational analysis called a node-link analysis, which puts a bunch of fancy numbers to how well roads connect, and it shows this area as deficient. And so this would help alleviate the deficiency in the connectivity of your streets, and that benefits all involved. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
If I might, Rosalba?
Go ahead.
First of all, I appreciate your presentation. As far as safety is concerned, I fear more for putting that road through because it'll throw... And I don't know, but 100 or more cars per day, two or three times a day through that small neighborhood with small roads. Putting that road through will do nothing for health and safety of fire or ambulances. I appreciate your information, but when there's a ballgame, alls it will do is clog those roads as well. There's... There is not sufficient parking for that ballfield and all the people that come to it. So whether that road went through and alls that would do was put more traffic in there, but cars are still parked on both sides of the road. That will do absolutely nothing but add more, maybe 20 or 30 more parking spots. You're right. I do... I do not favor it going through simply because it will decimate that other neighborhood. That road isn't made. It's a small road, just like the ones that are clogged up now. It's a small road. You'll have cars parked on both sides of it. You will have, like I say, 100 or more cars a day going twice a day, whether it be morning or afternoon for school, dropping their kids off. You'll have small kids walking on that street with the intent of getting to school with a much higher volume of traffic. Police and fire police, I think, with their cars, can get about where they want, where they want, when they want. But fire apparatus and ambulances, this, I don't see helping at all because alls it will do is give more parking spots. Anybody that's been down there can see that during those ballgames, during normal times, not now. I can barely get my car through there. And opening up that road will... Won't alleviate those parking problems. So there again, I think... I think a cul-de-sac or something else in that area. I know people think that if they open that up, if they open that up, it will relieve traffic at Beaumont and at Riverview, but the traffic still has to turn around, drop their kids off and turn around. And when we do get back to normal times, fifty ninth or Seventh West backs up from fifty ninth and backs up even as far as Winchester. People are going to know that's a through through route to Winchester and I think traffic will increase on their roads less than decrease if that's a thoroughfare. So I appreciate the arguments, but I I just, the fire apparatus, it is a problem. And the only way we could fix that problem is post that road and not let people park on either side of it because it's a small road as well. So it will just add to the problem to open that up. I don't I don't see where it will will diminish the problem at all. Hopefully, a cul-de-sac would work or dead end the road. I don't know either way, but I don't think opening that road is going to do anything as we think we're trying to fix. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Allison or Rob, do you guys have the image of the site in question, like an Ariel or Jared or Melinda that we can share so we can see?
Yeah, let me. Hold on.
Do you want to go, Melinda, or do you want me to?
Oh, if you have it, I I have it handy as well, if you want to do it.
Well, as you can see, this is, I've got a couple of images I can share with you. This is the plan. A little bit. And this is the parcel that they're talking about right here. I don't know if you can see that where my cursor is. In fact, maybe I better, let me share a different screen with you. I think it'll be a little bit right here. Can you see this one? This is the actual aerial.
Yep, that looks good. A little bit.
Okay, I'm going to zoom in as much as I can. So this this is the walkway right now. They come through here and then they jog a little bit and go through here to get to the school. We already own this piece of property right here. So we're just talking about this piece of property right here out on the street. So this is the actual property that we're talking about.
That's the piece of private property that this the students currently have to cross before they get onto the school property. And this also.
They have to cross it here.
And this also illustrates how the people cross a parking lot rather than being on a sidewalk. This parking lot isn't striped or finished. There's no pedestrian route through it. And so, you know, when there's ball games going on and kids are walking through there, it it's a busy, chaotic parking lot. Having a sidewalk, you know, with a street light on it would would certainly put them on a better route. And then also this route through the parking lots and by these ball fields at different times when the fields aren't being used, they're just empty structures out in the middle of a field that that kids are walking by, whether that creates mischief or an opportunity for mischief. It's just not a preferred route as opposed to a public sidewalk with streetlights, I feel. And then, of course, we seldom put pedestrians across private properties for sidewalks. So that's just something we don't typically see in a subdivision design. And a dead end road like is shown in Willow Grove Lane here. The clear intent there is for the road to go through. Every other road in the subdivision, the Murray Oak subdivision, has a cul-de-sac. This one did not because the designer of this subdivision was probably told by the city to provide an access to connect it through for the connectivity reasons. It's very atypical to have a road dead end like this. Your fire marshal would speak against it. It's longer than the hundred and fifty feet. That's a normal standard. It's approaching two hundred and fifty feet. And so, you know, that's where some of the concern comes from. And and I disagree with Mr. Cox a little bit in the fact that providing when there's only one road to a ball field, if you have two roads to the ball field, you've now doubled the availability of which way the fire truck to come from. And so I I do feel opening a second road, I mean, it it gives quite a bit more opportunity for for access vehicles, emergency vehicles, or even the citizens to leave the area to prevent such congestion. On the other end, you know, Riverside, you know, some folks that live in this neighborhood could come directly through and and I, you know, a general planning principle and transportation principle, the more you disperse traffic evenly through your city, the safer it is. When you concentrate cars in a certain area, it concentrates issues, whether it's turning issues, traffic accidents. And that's why this node link analysis is done. It's because, you know, people, the planners are trying to get the people to use all the streets in the city a little bit more evenly rather than concentrating at certain locations because that's where the accidents tend to occur. So I I feel the second road is a welcome addition and like I mentioned, a couple of the other departments, I'll just state what their views were, but public utilities. You know, we would have to have sewer mains and water mains through people's yards in order for this to not go through. Many cities around you, that that's not allowed at all. It's a special exception in your city that we'd have to get from Trace Stokes, I believe, to allow the utilities to go through the side yards. Because it would be public utilities, water, sewer and storm drain. The easement would be almost about as wide as the pavement of Willow Grove Lane, which is quite prohibitive to the to the area in the lots of the subdivision. But over time, generally what happens is people plant trees, decks are built, sheds are built. And these things become obstructions over the utilities. When the city has an emergency and they have to go in there, sometimes at their own expense, they have to clear the way to get the utility repaired. Clear to work in a road is quite easy to work in somebody's side yard with trees and decks and having to move sheds. That's just the view, point of view from public utilities. Public Works, they deal with your storm drain systems. They also would prefer not to have storm drain pipes in people's side yards for the same reason. But in this particular case, with the road going through, this subdivision will have a detention pond. Heaven forbid anything ever happened. If the pond overflows, the water would go into the public right of way and down the street. With a cul-de-sac, this water would end up going through these neighbors' side yards, which is another reason why the Public Works Department would prefer to see the road go through so that it can provide a hundred year conveyance route in case of excessive storms. I think I already mentioned the planners. Yeah, so that's a few more other departments and what their views are as to why they want it to go through. You know, it's just the ease and maintenance of utilities in the future for some of your departments and it's more about connectivity and dispersing traffic for safety reasons for your planners and fire and and police folks. So just a little bit more info there. Thank you.
Dale, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I I appreciate you speaking for a fire marshal and everybody else. All the departments are, they have their goals and everything else. My goal and my my main concern is the safety of the men and women that live on those streets. We put that street through. If you look at the street, it'll be narrow, it'll be clogged. You can look at your aerial picture and see how little parking there is at the ball field. If that street goes through, that that is a narrow, a narrow, very narrow street is the one is above it. And and I can guarantee cars will be parked on each side. Cars will be trying to get through. You won't get connectivity. Well, you'll have connectivity, but you won't have any more access to fire as as you do now. You see four ball diamonds and enough parking for maybe twenty cars. So those cars will park someplace and they'll park on that same street, plus they'll park down in that other neighborhood. If that, I wouldn't be so adamantly against it if that road was wider, if both roads were wider. But I see what it does to those neighborhoods now, how it decimates them. How that traffic shuts those neighborhoods down two, two, two and a half hours a day coming and going. And alls we will do is spread that problem through the other, through that little, that little neighborhood. As far as utilities are concerned, I talked to, had a discussion. They can run the utilities through that road. The Livingston's are willing to let them go through the right of way as well. I, there'll be sidewalks for the kids to walk on if you, even if you deadhead that road there. There'll be sidewalks for the kids to walk on. There there are no ball games when the kids are going to and from school, so the ball games are in the afternoon and on on weekends. So you know, there's, we could argue this and debate this back and forth all day long. But the bottom line is, you open up that road, you decimate that neighborhood and there's a safety concern for the men and women and the kids that will be walking to school because there'll be a traffic jam there as sure as the sun comes up in the east every morning and every afternoon. And those kids will be walking along those roads. So you know, we can debate it back and forth all day long, but those those are my reasons. I think, you know, there's there's safety concerns on both sides and I agree. But I don't see this as a good resolution for fire trucks because I'll guarantee they will get through there if there's a ball game and they're fine getting through there now if there isn't a ball game. I agree with that. I'll sit back for.
Anybody else have?
I know Jared, Jared, are you still on the call? Do you have any comments to add? I know you presented at the planning commission.
I'm sorry, yeah. You know, I don't know what to add of the, then Rob, Rob kind of represented that side well and I I hear Councilman Cox's concerns and and we heard a lot of that the night at the meeting. The, but yeah, those those kinds of concerns are are an issue and and we recognize it's not a perfect solution. But I think I would just reiterate what we what we presented that night to the planning commission and I I think the neighbor works engineer expressed that pretty well, too. We do feel like the benefits to connecting the roads here were clear when the subdivision was originally created and they're still clear to us today. It it increases circulation and makes things better all around. It doesn't necessarily fix every problem, especially right here where there's been no traffic through onto that dead end street. But that's that's outweighed in our opinion by the benefits of connection. I don't know how to say it more succinctly than that. It's it's been represented pretty well.
And I do appreciate what what you guys are saying.
Sure.
But I'm not against the project. I'm all for the project. It's just the design of that road. And it's easy for you and I and and everybody to say that it will benefit the connectivity, but we don't live on those streets. We're not the ones that are going to be directly impacted by it. I I just want to make that perfectly clear. But I think the project is a great project. The design, we, in my opinion, we need to, even if it's just dead end that street, you can have your utilities go through, you can do whatever you want, take care of that and and the future. When when this was designed, it was, I don't know how many years ago. And the the population, look at the houses around, the population wasn't what it is now. And the traffic isn't what it is now and the congestion isn't what it is now. So there again, I'll I'll try to shut up, but I'm not going to make any promises.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair, may I be heard?
Sure, GL, please.
So the purpose of this tonight is this discussion is to start the process to fulfill a condition that the planning commission made when they approved the preliminary subdivision. And that condition is that the applicant obtain this private property that we're talking about tonight. I don't, I can't speak for the applicant. I have no idea if they've made an effort to purchase it, if they've talked to the owners and documented that to see if that's gone anywhere. If they can't purchase it, then their next option, I guess, in their minds is to come to the city council and to have the council consider and then agree to exercise eminent domain on their behalf. So that's the purpose of this discussion tonight as a committee of the whole. There's a, there's a whole process involved in eminent domain. I'll just briefly go through that. There's been some negotiations on behalf of the city with the property owner that ended with obviously not obtaining this this property. The the purpose of the committee of the whole was to alert council that this is a potential that that the applicant would like to pursue. And it is the applicant who is pursuing it. And if they want to come back again, then there would be a time when we would have to put a resolution before the city council in a city council meeting and have the council determine whether they were going to vote in favor or against eminent domain. In order to do that, there's there are noticing procedures and there's also some other things we'd have to do to, before that could be on an agenda. And then if the council did, assuming the council did vote to move forward with eminent domain, there's a, there's a process there that's a little bit lengthy as well. And that is the filing of a complaint in court. I'm told that's about a ninety day wait to get into court to have a determination in terms of whether the city can move forward with the with eminent domain. But bottom line is here tonight is that we're talking about, or the applicant is talking about whether the council has any appetite to exercise eminent domain. And obviously, we can't vote tonight in the committee of the whole. But that's what this discussion is all about. It's it's it is about the development, but primarily it's really, is this something the council is going to do going forward?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Frank.
I'm I guess I'm going to ask it for GL. GL, remind us, it's a, is it a strip that would, that that's owned by someone that's preventing this, a strip of, like a little strip of property or it's not a whole, not a whole area that a house could be on, right? Correct? Or?
What happened? Survey was done for the subdivision. An error was made in the survey that produced a remnant parcel between the two landowners, being the school and the owner of the subdivision at the time. Really, it's, the parcel doesn't really exist. Somebody owns it. It would be either the school or it would be the subdivision. But it's not a remnant, but the county has made a habit out of turning these into remnant parcels and putting them up for tax sales. So this was a very small strip that was really wrongfully created out of, from bad surveying that created this little strip here. And it was originally acquired by the original owner of this home upon notification from the original developer that there would be, that there's a remnant parcel there. And he was wise enough to recognize it. That's it's a protection strip to try to prevent the road from going through. And so the owner purchased that small piece of land. But he is not occupying any of the land in question that the city is looking to take in eminent domain. None of his landscaping or or sheds or none of that's within the area. It's an unused piece of ground at the end of the dead end that the city would be trying to acquire.
So really, this property is not the property that he owns is not a part of his daily activities of his home or the existing property where his house sits?
Correct. And and to me, I find that very important, you know, because it doesn't really, and you know, hurt his enjoyment of his property. He still gets to enjoy that remaining two or three feet that he's landscaped. But this part here, he hasn't done any improvements to. And that's the part where the students are really crossing private property, which isn't typically a thing the city likes for liability reasons.
Go ahead, Diane.
This is an area that I don't live in and it's not in my district. I am aware of it. I perceived about five or six emails and all of them have been requesting that the street go through and they've cited public health reasons. Kids having to cross Triplein and I don't know it well enough other than, you know, when I, when I have, when I went to check it out, but you know, what I'm aware of is the, is the people in the community who have contacted me who have said that they would like it to go through. And like I said, it's because kids walking to school and I guess there were a couple of kids hit on Triplein and they cited those. So that's, that's my.
Seventh West where kids go.
Oh, Seventh West. See how much I know about it. But anyway, and so those are, that's the public outreach that I've received. So, you know, I guess I would like to know, I would like to know more about how the neighborhood feels. Is there a way that there could be a walking area through that? To go from one area to the other, just to make it more safe, you know, because because that's what I keep hearing is it's not safe for the kids to be walking.
What am I, I have a question in regards to that. So let's say this, having a through street doesn't go through for whatever reason. And you guys put up a cul-de-sac. Wouldn't that close that walkway if you did the cul-de-sac?
The cul-de-sac would not close the walkway, but the students would still be required to cross the private property and then into the corner of that unstriped gravel parking area.
But don't you guys also own that corner right there? Right. So wouldn't that, I mean, wouldn't that be a liability to the homeowners whoever purchased that property?
We would not have that walkway there, I don't believe. No, because of exactly the reason you're stating. Somebody's incurring liability by allowing the people to walk on their, on their property, basically. If something ever happened down there, they would, the homeowner would be liable. And that's why I think this particular homeowner would would like to get this liability off of his plate.
So either way, at this point, the homeowner and neighbor works could be liable if anything were to happen in those two sections.
Correct.
Even standing. And if it goes through without a through street and there's a cul-de-sac, then neighbor works could be liable. Well, again, both properties, I guess. But in this case, if you have a property budding up there, wouldn't the homeowner, they could decide to just close the walkway completely?
Well, to affect that, you know, there would have to be other instruments in place, you know, either easements or other methods that would have to be done to allow the the kids to walk through that area.
Okay, so it would still, we would still kind of come through, circle back around to some sort of easement or eminent domain if either plan went through.
Yes, and it still puts the students into that gravel parking area that I've personally seen is just a chumbled mess with cars back in every which way trying to maneuver around in there without striping.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? I have a few things, but Cap?
I guess what I'd like to say is, I mean, eminent domain is never anything to be taken lightly, even if it's a very small piece of land that is seen to be unused. It's just important, I think, to pay it, you know, the the seriousness that has. I should disclose, I recently received a down payment assistance loan from Neighbor Works, so I do have that, that we are in our house because of their assistance and their amazing program. So my huge neighbor works fan. But I've heard from residents on both sides. I've heard residents say, please make it a through street. I've said, heard some say, please don't. I've had some say, just put a park there. We can't handle any more cars. I think it's just a really unfortunate case of huge mismanagement of a parcel in the past, which we now have to clean up that mess one way or another, which is is frustrating. And it's hard because we can hear from current residents on their thoughts, but we don't know what those, you know, who'll purchase those homes on the new street, whether it's a through street or a cul-de-sac of, you know, what will be in in their best interest as well. So I guess that's where I'm sitting right now.
You know, if I mind, I just want to clear something up as well. That property where the ball field is, that people are worried about liability, the school, that that school property, that's not. So they're walking through that portion and then they go right on to school property. It's not striped, but they they have a clear shot through and then they go on to sidewalks from there. And I think we did hear in council or in meeting in the whole a few weeks ago from a lot of residents that I think it was in council from citizen comments on this as well.
I know. I've read the comments and I also watched the planning commission video meeting. And it was, it was like one or the other, you know, we want it through street, we don't want it through street. And I I want to know, Allison or Rob, is, do you guys have any relationship with the school district at all about any of this or has there been any conversation? I know there's a lot of concern about the students. Has there been anything on your guys' part?
I have not talked to the school district. I reached out to the principal of the junior high just a couple of days ago. I know he's been really busy, I'm sure, with school starting. I haven't heard back from him. But, you know, I heard secondhand some information about what his thoughts were, so I won't ask those long because I I have no firsthand knowledge of his, you know, what his desires are. But I did reach out to him. I haven't heard back yet. And and we did try and put the homeowner to, just just to let you aware. We talked to them and and offered to purchase the property from them and, you know, since the planning commission meeting, so I knew what the planning commission had recommended that we do eminent domain and we did reach out then to see if we could settle with the, I mean, fill that route. And it's just not about the money for them. They just don't want the road to go through, so they really weren't willing to negotiate on the sale of the property.
Allison, we did receive one email from a woman at the city that had heard from the school district. I can track that down and make that information available to the city council
Okay.
for their meeting.
That would be great. But in the planning, there were quite a few people for it and quite a few people against it. And I think the. there were quite a few people for it and quite a few people against it. And I think the planning commission kind of determined that they had about as many for it as against it. I guess they were just looking out for the we, we just want to do what's best for the whole community. You know, there's a few homeowners on Willow Creek, Willow Grove Drive that are not happy and we understand that. And I, you know, personally, I bought a piece of, when I bought my house, it was on a dead end street. And they put the road through, so I know what they're feeling right now. I did increase traffic a little bit on my street, but I think the intent was for it to go through all along. And I, I never really, I didn't fight it because I knew that was the intent when I was on the dead end street. But sometimes I guess, I don't know if you're all Star Trek fans, but sometimes the need of the many outweighs the need of a few, I guess. I don't know.
Thank you. So anybody else have any questions? So I have, I've been looking into this because I, you know, I, as chair, I've been receiving a lot of comments and concerns from citizens. This is also the neighborhood where I grew up and my family lives and my cousins went to school.
Allison, sorry.
Go ahead.
Allison, I'm going to unshare your screen. It's showing some emails.
There you go. Thank you.
Protective of that information.
So it, there's a few things, you know, if we do eminent domain, it's a long process. We, we all can agree this is, and even the planning commission was not happy. They're happy that they weren't going to make this decision. It's going to be a hard decision to make. Some of the few things, it's, it's, by the time all of this goes through, you know, the homeowner can lose a lot of money in representing themselves if they don't take a settlement offer from the city for eminent domain. There's a lot of things to consider in this vote or if we were to move this forward. And I'm really looking at you all to decide if that's something we're going to go ahead and bring to the council. And some key points that I did want to bring up to the, from the planning commission, I think really, they hands down do a good job at looking at all the facts and what is relative to the code and also to the city in terms of the streets without considering also the schools district because we, you know, we, we can say that it, it's going to affect the students, it's going to affect the ball field, yes. But we also can, can write an ordinance or help the community to have, you know, resident parking only. I know when I went to judge, that was something that the neighborhood ended up having to do because we have students, I mean, judged at Hamela Parking. So we had to have permits and it was only certain times a day. So that's something that we can consider. But some of the things that the planning commission brought up was, let's see. Traffic study is not required for this because it only has 10 homes. But the school district can provide and, and even neighbor works a traffic pattern to see what the patterns will be throughout this neighborhood and with this development. It also takes away a lot of risk from the kids or from anyone to, to not have to go through the main or the main road, right, to Seventh West. It can kind of ease the flow, ease the traffic and through this. But again, we don't know until or if it goes through. Let's see. It was always the intent of this way the road was constructed to have it go through. That property was in ownership for a long time and then purchased by Neighbor Works. There's, to me personally, just kind of seeing how this project has gone through, it, there's been a lot of back and forth. Well, you should do a cul-de-sac, you shouldn't do a cul-de-sac. And it's put a lot of hardship on Neighbor Works too. And that, and that costs money too. You know, we have them go back to the drawing board. They're going to have to go back and redo plans, which they're willing to do. I know that. And it's, and it really is up to the residents and us to determine that. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of risk. And Allison, one of the things that was brought up in the planning commission, and I would like you to kind of touch base on this is, how much would the cost of homes be in regards to if you guys did it through street versus if you did a cul-de-sac? How would, how would that increase in the lot size and in the amount?
Well, the lot, Rob can answer as far as how it will affect the lot size. Rob, can you answer that? How it affects the size of the lot?
The size of the lots doesn't change very much, but the buildable pad does. When you put lots into cul-de-sacs, they end up with kind of an odd shape. And so though they may have a similar area as a rectangle, what the size house you could put on it would be significantly smaller. And that's what would be affected also by these utilities going through the side yards. We'd need in the neighborhood of 30 to 40 feet for easement. So that's going to pinch it even more and would make the buildable pads, you know, for, I would say, a very modest home, small to medium sized house at best.
And what would the cost size be for having a through street or a cul-de-sac? The cost, or the cost amount, sorry.
There's a trade-off there. The utilities would be similar because we would have to take the utilities through as well. Pavement wise is pretty close because the cul-de-sac bulb is so much larger, but we have a little less distance. So it's pretty close to a wash, I would say, for the actual constructability of it. It's more
The expense would be in redoing the plans and having the new plans drawn up and so that would affect the cost a little bit to the home buyer.
Sure, yes.
So this, this could affect, if we were to do, change it to a cul-de-sac, it could affect the price of the homes, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it, it will, it most likely will affect a little bit the price of the home.
Well, and the size of the home, of course, would affect, you know, the larger homes you can construct, usually construction is done on percentage profits. A bigger home costs a little bit more, it can help them a little bit. But it's really more the desirability of having two and three stall garages nowadays. These lots could not support a three stall garage. The current configuration at 80 foot width could, could support three stall garage. So you, you also chop out a lot of your clientele that are looking to buy the homes if it's not big enough for the three stall garage.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any other questions, comments, concerns for the council? Allison or Rob?
Well, really, I just think if anyone has any other questions, that planning commission meeting, I, I thought was terrific. I thought your planning commissioners were so well educated. I had spoken with Trey Stokes about it. He said they did go through a, a long process altogether, learning about all the nuances. And so at that particular meeting, I hardly had to speak because they were so well informed. And there's just some emotion and opinion that they give that I think is worth the council to see, some of the comments they made and how definitive they were about their statements. I think there's some value in seeing their facial expressions as they're giving their thoughts about, you know, what they think and why they think it. So I, I thought that was a great meeting and I would advise anybody to watch it that wants a little more information or a little more feeling about what your staff thinks and what your planning commissioners think.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions, comments? Well, I really appreciate the both of you. Can you guys hear me? Sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, so before we go, sorry, I just kind of want to take a small poll now that I have everyone here. Do we want to bring this to the council? Are you guys comfortable to have a vote on this? Because in order for them to to even do a proposal for a cul-de-sac, we need, we really need to take a vote. Or decide now if this will not go through. And I really just kind of want to hear your guys' feedback on that.
That, I'll be the first one to go for my opinion. I've never really given my opinion too much, too, you know, too early on something like this for, for to vote on something and because something could change and and if I said, yeah, I feel good about it now, and then later I felt like I didn't, I might feel a little pressure, feel like, oh, I already said yes. So I kind of want to wait, if they put it through, then, I mean, you know, if we all, I mean, there's always a chance that it can go through and/or there's a chance it can't go through. And I'm just thinking like, let it work its process. I don't know. That probably didn't help your votes all, but
No, Brett, that's fine. The process would be, I mean, ultimately I can decide to bring it on, but I'm
Yeah, right.
I really want your guys' input on this as a council. Not to take a vote, but just, do we let it continue with this process? Because by the time we, I mean, in talking to GL, we would have to write a resolution, either for or against, right? And we probably won't be able to get it onto the books. And we also have notification to the homeowner, so we won't get it onto the books until sometime
I'm all for the process to come to the council.
Okay. Kat, Dale, Diane?
I think you pretty well know where I am. So it's the will of the council, but I, I'm not in favor of putting that road through.
Make sure you understand, I didn't say I am either, so. I just think it's the role of come to the councils.
Boy, I would like, I would like to be better educated about it and have some sense of the community because, like I said, what I've, the information I've received has been very limited and the concern was public safety and so I would, I would, I would like to know more because I think it has a big impact on that. Well, I know it does, on that neighborhood. So I'd like to make sure that we're doing what's, what's good for the largest amount of people rather than just a very few. So I guess it needs to come to the council.
I spent a lot of time in that area. My three kids are at Viewmont and we play a lot of baseball over there. I'm definitely leaning towards a cul-de-sac plan and not going forward with eminent domain, but I'm not opposed to it going to the, to the council meeting if that's what the majority feel needs to happen in the process.
Okay, Rosalba, you tell us how you feel.
Well, I, I definitely know that this has just been a discussion and, and I welcome Allison and Rob to kind of give more of a presentation when they do come forward to the council. In, in terms of, you know, slides or just more information as well. And we usually receive this information in our packets, which we did from the planning commission. But just for, just for the benefit for you guys in, in terms of this process. But I, I think we should move it forward for a vote and, and go from there and, you know, gives everyone time to, to really just dive into it a little bit more. And ask questions, I guess. And, and really, Allison and Rob, I'm sure you guys are available for, to answer any questions. And welcome the public to, and the residents of that neighborhood in that area to really contact us. One thing I, I do want to say is I, I feel like there's a lot that just kind of has been like with the school district and the, and the ball field that could be a little bit better managed. And that's something that we, we don't necessarily have control over. But maybe it's a start of a communication from the residents as well to contact the school district and, and really state their concerns about the safety of the, of the kids in the school, because that's not within our jurisdiction to make a decision based off of that. But with that said, we'll go ahead and move forward and bring it to a vote sometime in October and we'll follow up with you, Allison, for that.
Okay. Thank you very much for letting us come today and answer your question.
All right. Thank you, Allison. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you all. Appreciate you.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. We're going to go ahead and move forward to our next item with Brenda Moore to talk about the fiscal year 2020-21 budget amendment. Brenda, go ahead.
Good evening. It's stopped raining. The sun is out. We've got a rainstorm for the next hundred days. So before you, next council meeting, which is actually next week, there's this budget opening. It is the annual roll forward of all of the projects that were in progress and various items that need to be moved forward because the amounts weren't spent and are kind of in reserve. Or need to be moved forward because there are plans for the money. It's a long one. Part of our process is every year, budgets do not automatically roll from one year to the next. It's always stopped. The money goes into reserves. Then this is the process to get it out of reserves for, so that we can finish the projects. I could go line by line, but I don't think I will. I'm just going to go to the ones that are new. Projects that you haven't heard before. And then if you have any questions about any of the projects that we're just rolling forward, let me know. The grants that we received, you've heard of the Jimmy Johns one. The arts people have been out. They got a $15,000 Utah Humanities Cares Grant. Part of that is currently being used to put their part timer back to work because as part of our COVID cutbacks, a lot of our part timers, especially in facilities which are closed, have been laid off, basically. And so she's come back to work. They got $15,000 from the Utah Humanities. She, she also got $4,000 from the Utah Division of Arts and from their cares grant. So those are new grants that have been in. We are rolling the Justice Department COVID grant, the Beard Dominion Nation money. If the guys are going to grow beards, they'll probably do it again. The victims advocates have not spent all of their money yet. So we're going to roll that forward and allow them to spend it this year and not just roll it into our reserves. In the general fund, something that is new is the animal control contract. If you pass that later in the meeting, this budget of $12,928 will be moved from the miscellaneous, non-departmental miscellaneous and over to the police department for their urban wildlife. The CIP fund, we are allocating or we're going to recognize revenue from the RDA for $200,000 and appropriate that to build a road, that 4250 South Road extension that Melinda gave you the update on. Our crews are doing the work for the RDA and so we need to increase their budget for infrastructure because it will become a city road. An important one to notice, I am reducing the infrastructure budget in the water fund. I'm decreasing it by $5.6 million because we received those bond proceeds last year. The other ones that is new, new money coming out of reserves are the changes due to open enrollment. We are preparing our budget right in the middle of open enrollment. We had a couple people that went from not taking our insurance to taking our insurance as either a family or a two-party. And we have had some people that went from single to family. And that is a big expense on the, on a department's budget, especially if there's not too many people in that. So I'm increasing the budgets for that. And then we need to, the general fund needs to purchase the Verizon cell tower from the RDA. Once the property is signed, I keep being hopeful about that. And so I put that in the budget so that we can do that. The other items, all of the ones in the capital projects fund or the enterprise funds, they're all just rolls of past projects that weren't finished except for in the central garage. They needed some extra money to put the roof mounted swamp cooler up on their, swamp cooler up on the roof, move it from inside the building to outside the building and up on the roof. And so there's new money in that of $8,534. They have plenty of reserves for that. That's why we have that fund have a little bit of reserve. So when they need equipment, they can go get it without having to adjust the amount that the other funds pay them to take care of their vehicles. Capital improvements, there, these are all the savings plans and or projects that are in process. And that we're just moving forward. The one Diane likes the best is to clean that we're just moving forward. Uh, the one Diane likes the best is the clean energy vehicles. Hopefully we will be able to purchase vehicles in the future. And we could use that with the clean energy. The uh, police had saved a little bit of money. They, they had a car that was being replaced by insurance. We're rolling that one forward. And then they had not spent all of their money for cars last year. So we moved it forward in case they need other equipment or want to buy an extra car. Um, so there's a whole list there. And the only other new money in the capital projects is the pavilion replacement project. They are in the planning stages for, I think it's pavilion number five, the one that's right there by that park. By the park office building. And they would like to, as part of this, they're going to kind of revamp that whole area. I haven't seen plans. But they would like to put restrooms on that side of the road, public restrooms over there by that pavilion. Instead of having to have people walk across the road to the ones that were created, I don't know when. But I am also told that they're only used in emergency situations by some of the council members. So um, they need an extra $300,000, they believe, in order to put those restrooms in there. So that is new res, money coming out of reserves for that. The rest of them are just projects we're trying to get finished. The uh, one thing I did have a question of when I met with the budget committee is the Murray Theater. I was going to, and I am going to reverse the budget on that, let the previous year's budget roll back into reserves. And then uh, remove the 500,000 that was appropriated for this year. The track funding has been polled. It will probably be years, um, at least a year or two, if not more. If ever that the county will come up with their half of the funds again. And I'm not sure where in the future this project will go. So I was going to remove this from the budget and let it flow back into the reserves. I know a couple council members would like me to just leave it there as a savings program for it. So I just need to know your fill before I redo the whole budget document as to, or the ordinance, which I have no problem doing. If you all want to leave it as a savings program, or we just let it sit in reserves and knowing that in the future that project may resurrect itself, and then we would find the funds for it then. It's up to you.
Okay, Rosalba, can I speak?
Yes, please, Diane.
Thank you. Um, first of all, Brenda, we did go line by line. And I really appreciate your being so patient with, with me as well as, well, Kat's probably smarter about that. But anyway, I really do appreciate the time that you took to take us through that. And I have concern about moving money from the Murray Theater. I want to make sure that um, we refurbished that. I think it's really important for our community. And I think it's supported by our citizens. So I would like to keep the money there and see if we can't find the money for the, for the bathrooms um, in another area, which you indicated you thought you could. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Rosalba, if I might?
Go ahead, Dale.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that as long as pulling money, uh, leaving that money there doesn't hurt other projects that we need. If you feel comfortable in, in finding that $300,000 elsewhere, I'm fine with it. But let's, I don't want any other ongoing projects or anything else that's in the budget to suffer because of it. So if you're good with that, I'm good with that. I agree, it's, it could be a long time before we see any movement on the Murray Theater, as neat as that could be. Uh, the situation we're in now, it could be years. And I don't want to have another, another program suffer while money sits.
Quick question, Brenda. Oh, sorry. Um, with the CIP funding, how much do we have for parks and rec in terms of CIP? Like what is their, what's their pool right now?
The, that is a very good question. Um,
I'm only curious because I know at the end of the fiscal year, we went over that. And it seemed like they had enough money that we didn't need to pull out.
So that, what they, um, what they're telling me for the pavilion project, they have 1.2 million left, 1.271 left. And if they want to do the bathrooms, they'll need an extra 300,000. There is funds, some reserve that we haven't used yet sitting in, that's not allocated anywhere, sitting in the um, CIP fund. So if personally, my personal opinion is I don't like kids running across the road to go to the bathroom from one place to the other. And if you're going to put in a brand new pavilion, reorganize things, you should have a new restroom. And the one across the street, I am going to have to make the adventure and go in there and just check it out. But it's been there for a long, long time. So I'm thinking it would be a good investment to use some of the funds that is not unallocated for that project. And then I am okay with just earmarking what has been put into the Murray Theater so far and just let it sit there and earn no interest in the bank account for a while and see what, see what happens in the future. If we need it in the future, we can always unallocate it from being saved for the Murray Theater. It's just a
So this, let me ask this next question, um, because we've already lost so much in District Three in terms of historical buildings. But with, I would hate for the theater to be the next thing. But with this 500,000, if something were to come up or we needed to do some maintenance to the Murray Theater, is that something, or 500,000? Yeah. Is that something we can allocate the funding for to help maintain it in this time? Or is it, or where would that money come from? Let's say the window broke and we had to replace it, or there was a leak, or anything like that.
Right now, Jeff Martin is part of facilities is watching that building and he goes over and, you know, the facility's budget is paying for the heat because they do heat it a bit and for the electricity that's in there and stuff like that. So he's watching it right now. His budget, unless it was huge, a huge expense would probably cover whatever um, needed to be done. I'm sure he's looked at it and made sure it's sealed up as well as it can. So it doesn't deteriorate much further. So, you know, make sure the roof's not leaking and all of that kind of stuff. But yeah, if something had to be fixed that was huge, you could use some of that money for that. That's capital improvements project is maintenance as well as it is new. So.
So I guess worst case scenario, if we remove this funding and it went into the general fund.
It doesn't go to the general fund. It would just sit in the CIP as reserves.
CIP as the reserves, right, sorry. Then what happens with the Murray Theater? I mean, that's, that's kind of the question, right? Like, then what happens with that? And that's
It sits there. Yeah, it sits there. It, until the project can be, because the city itself cannot afford to do the whole project on their own. I mean, we just can't. Um, so it will sit there, we'll maintain the building as best we can so that it doesn't deteriorate further. And then if the project gets re-resurrected, then we figure out how much of the reserves that are sitting in CIP at that point, we use for it and we start budgeting like we did at first. I think this is the second or third year there's been a little bit of money put into the budget to um, to kind of move the project along. And um, it, so if CIP didn't, hadn't spent all of their money on other things, then we could just resurrect this money. If it's allocated like this, if we get desperate and somebody else needs the money more, we make a decision, we weigh it.
And we could always add to it, right?
You can always add to it if we've got available.
We got that funding available from the county again, and it came from, we do that match.
Yep. It's a soft, these allocation things, savings things are soft. They can, they can be changed. We don't like to because we have the trust of our department heads that if they've got this money and they don't spend it one year, the next year they get to save it up and spend it on something that they really need. It helps them not spend on stuff that that they sort of need, but they, they save their money for what they really want and what they really need. And they trust that you guys and um, I think it's a two-way. You trust that they're only getting what they need and they trust you to leave it there and let it build up. So, so we can do the same thing with the theater and let it sit and build. It's a flexible, it can be very flexible.
That would be my preference. Let us sit there and see.
Okay. I can rearrange this. Um, if I'm going to rewrite this, I am going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to add an EMS grant that the fire department just um, informed me of. It wasn't an emergency. So if I wasn't going to rewrite, it doesn't matter. But they have received a $4,081 grant to buy some uh, equipment for their ambulance service, EMS system. And I may, I'm going to adjust the department COVID grant, the Justice Department COVID grant down a little bit. They spent more money than I thought already. So we're not going to roll quite as much forward. But I will get Jan some new papers to be in your packet on Friday.
All right. Thank you, Kat. Did you guys
I just wanted to say thank you, Brenda, for meeting with us. And if there's somewhere we can take that money from, thank you for, you know, your creativity and, and finding ways to make that work. Since the bathrooms are going to be amazing and really, really important community. Because I've just been kind of crossing my fingers, waiting for Chief Burnett here to bust my kid peeing behind a tree. So if we can uh, make those happen and keep money in the Murray Theater Fund as long as possible, I think that's great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm cracking up now after Kat, but I'm totally agree. I, I like the idea of leaving it there because once it's gone out of there, it's tough to get it back in there. One, and like Brenda said, if we need it, we can pull from it later on. Um, I do have a question. I don't know if you've got this on hand, Brenda, but the insurance increase for insurance families, uh, for families instead of individuals, do you know that amount that we're increasing?
If, if a person goes from an individual, which is approximately, I don't know the exact numbers, but
I'm at the tall amount.
But it's approximately like $4,000, $5,000 to, for a single person to have insurance. You put a family in there, it's probably 15,000 or 16,000. So if someone goes, that's a $10,000 difference. You get a couple people moving. And that's why I usually adjust the budget at this point of the year. Um, just to make sure that towards the end of the year, the police and the fires insurance budget, we're not borrowing money from salaries or anything to make sure their insurance is, is good.
Okay. So you'll just move that over. And then I'm, I want to make sure that I'm letting everyone know that I support that extra 300,000 for parks. So thank you.
Same. I think that's great. Brenda, as far as insurance goes, do we, does that increase like yearly? Is that something that just happens or figure this year?
No, the, the insurance went up. It's normal 5% or something. This is the difference when in May, everybody gets to choose what insurance you have.
That's right.
And it's the time of year that people can get on the insurance or change from single to family. Very seldom, sometimes they go the other direction, but there were two or three people that went from opting out, which is the cheapest thing for the city, is to pay them for not being on our insurance. So there were people that were opting out that went to two-party into family. So it told me that there were some people whose spouse's employment had changed or their insurance had changed. And so they got, hopped onto ours. And that's just, all that is, is people moving and changing insurance around. And it's a big chunk of money if you've got a small budget.
Right. Perfect. I was also going to add, I'm sure Parks and Recs will love the bathrooms right next to their building. Because I know there's times I've had to take Lincoln. We've been at the farmer's market and I'm like, please let us use your bathroom.
Now we know who the council member is.
I know, sorry. Um, and they've always been great. But I know that alleviates some, a lot of people going into the Parks and Recs building to use their facilities. So awesome. Well, thank you, Brenda. Thank you for your time. And anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns? No? All right. Thank you, Brenda. I guess we'll see you at the council meeting.
Yes.
All right. We're going to go ahead and move on with um, Chief Burnett. And we're going to go over the Metro Narcotics Task Force Agreement. Go ahead and let us know what that's all about.
Well, excuse me, uh, this is something we, uh, we sign and update every year. The agreement, we're part of the task force, which means uh, we have an officer that uh, that's assigned to the task force. And uh, and you'll maybe remember last year, uh, there was some major changes on the uh, on this same uh, MOU. In that Murray was no longer the, the uh, host funding agency. So this is just, this year, there's uh, it's time for us to sign up uh, sign the agreement again. Uh, there's really not any major changes. The, the changes, I think, that come through uh, this year, different from other, last year, is the, there's been some uh, changes in how this, the uh, federal government uh, does their equitable sharing. So any, any funding that uh, may need to be distributed to anybody that's involved. There's some different restrictions that the federal government has put in uh, that uh, that they've worked into this. Uh, mainly that now we, everybody gets a percentage of whatever money would be shared. Uh, and that's depending on how many people are uh, each agency has assigned to the task force. And uh, also there's a, I know there's a couple of uh, additional agencies that have, have joined that they're, are part of this now, Summit County and a couple from Tulsa, or Tulsa City and a couple have joined on. So other than that, there's really not any major changes. It's just uh, need to have it approved and I'll be doing that in the next, the next meeting. So just if there's any questions about what we do or how it's uh, why we're a part of it, I mean, it's pretty much what we've been doing for about 20 years now since the, the task force has been.
Or sorry, does anybody have questions? Right, Diane?
I just, I just have a comment. I think, I think that kind of coordination is so important. And so I appreciate your continuing that participation.
Well, it, it helps us immensely. We have the resources to uh, for, for bigger cases. And currently our officer that's up there is uh, is in the middle of, of a really big case and is their lead task force agent. So I mean, it, it serves us just as well because we get the, the resources that the federal government can, can kind of send our way.
How often do you guys cycle in new officers? Is it yearly by year?
For here in Murray, ours is three-year rotation, uh, unless they come and ask for an extension. Like currently, our, our officer that's up there now, he should be coming out at the end of this year. Uh, the task force came and uh, because of the case he's working and asked that we extend him. So he'll, he'll be up there for another year. But it's usually three. And if they get an extension, it's four. Our, our regular detective rotation is five years, but due to the, you know, it's kind of a, a double-edged sword. We set them up there, they, they get a lot of good experience. And just as they start getting up to speed with some of the things, we pull them back. But it's also the nature of the work. It's just not a place you need to spend your whole career either sometimes. So it's, it's always good to, to let them go do that for a little while and then come back.
How many officers have we had go through the program?
Oh. Well, I've been here for 35 years and we've had somebody there in, in one of the, the, the task force has been around in a couple of different forms since then. And so, you know, one going in and out about every three years. My Murray High math can't do that in my head, but you know, there, there's been a few.
Why do you think this would help, help elevate their career as well as if
It does. It, it does. And they, and you know, they come back with some great experience and uh, and expertise. And we can put them back in uh, in detectives and, and they've learned how to them back in, in detectives and, and they've learned how to, how to put big cases together and, and manage things. So it's, it, it's, it's one that's very highly sought after by a lot of our officers. They all want to go up there. First of all, it's away from town and, and they, they get to go places and do things that you normally don't get to do here when they're deputized as federal agents.
Yeah. Well, perfect, thank you so much, chief. Anybody have any comments, concerns or questions they should ask? Yeah? All right, well, that concludes it. Thank you so much, chief. Really appreciate it. That is, Jan, do you have any announcements? Sorry before...
Thank you. I was going to mention one item and I have sent you an email on this and I'd just like to have you consider this and let us know if you're interested. And that's the Utah League of Cities and Towns 2020 Annual Convention. It will be all virtual, September 21st through the 25th. And, and so if you want to be registered for that, we'd be happy to get you registered. I'll send out that information again so you can review it and just let us know. That's it.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much, everyone. And I'm going to go ahead and close this meeting and adjourn it and we will meet back at 6:30. So take your time, eat your snacks Brett, and I'll see you guys then.